Good evening, everyone. Let us settle down so we can begin our board meeting, please. Thank you so much. Welcome to all of our viewers, those that are present and those that are online and will be watching the board meeting at a later date. We welcome everyone that have shown an interest of being a part of our March the 11th regular board meeting. I want to remind you that we do have a new feature for our viewers this evening. It is a running stroll of our board agenda and our voting items. The stroll will begin about 15 minutes prior to all board meetings and will end with the gravel when the meeting is called to order. And if you would like to scan, there will be a QR code seen on the screen prior to the meeting to view the agenda. To go over, you can go over our website under the School Board to access the agenda, or even in person, you can grab a paper copy of the agenda at the entrance of this meeting. You can also download the WLX Horizon app on your phones to see the live district events, like our school board meetings, and also access it on on-demand related content. At this time, would you please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Kids That Hope Treasure Hunters pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Please remain standing as we recite the Treasure Hunters pledge. As an adult and treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions. You may be seated. Okay, at this time, we have a very special presentation from Lincoln Park Academy students. They will perform for us this evening, and these students are from our wonderful school. Our principal is Principal Harrington, and they will be led under the direction of George Raming and will provide a special presentation for us. Young people, and Mr. Raming, you may get started. We are so proud of our young people, aren't we? Parents, if you're here this evening and you've brought your child or you've come to support, then please stand at this time so we can acknowledge you as well. We want to thank you for being so supportive. I know you realize it's your reasonable service, but as they said tonight, "One voice, one sound, one vision." And so each of us here tonight are supportive of our young people and of our community. And I really appreciate those shirts that they wore tonight. Be the change you want to see. Be the change you want to see. And take my hand so we can see together. Very good. Mr. Raming, thank you so much for using your wonderful gift. And Ms. Harrington, she's in the back. Thank you so much for the tremendous work that you do. That's our principal there for Lincoln Park Academy. At this time, we will open up our public hearing to the proposed adoption of School Board Policy 7540.08 AI and proposed adoption of amendments to School Board Policies 1430.03, 3430.03, and 4430.03 Sick Leave Policy, 1700 Facilities Planning Policy, and number 8415 Emergency and Crisis Management, as well as Policy 8420 Emergency Management Preparedness and Response Agencies. Finally, Policy 8600 on Transportation. At this time, the public hearing has been opened, and if there is anyone who would like to come to the podium, you've done your homework, and you would like to speak on behalf of any of these proposed adoptions, you may do so at this time. Seeing none, Superintendent, may we have your recommendation?
I recommend the board adopt the proposed School Board Policy 7540.08 Artificial Intelligence and proposed amendments to School Board Policy Numbers 1430.03, 3430.03, and 4430.03 Sick Leave. Policy 7100 Facilities Planning, Policy 8415 Emergency and Crisis Management, Policy 8420 Emergency Management Preparedness and Response Agencies, and lastly, Policy 8600 Transportation.
Very good, Superintendent. Thank you for your recommendation. Board members, the Superintendent has recommended. So moved by Mr. Ingersoll, and second by, was that Ms. Arison?
It was.
Okay. Board, is there any discussion on any of the following policies? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We will continue with our business meeting with special orders of business and the Star Awards, special thanks and recognition. Dr. Prince, would you lead us in that, please?
Okay. For now, I'd ask the board to remain at the dais for the first, but I'm going to introduce the best chief of communications in the state of Florida, Ms. Lydia Martin.
Thank you so much, Madam Chair, Board Member, Superintendent Dr. Prince. I'd like to first invite Dr. Kevin Perry, Assistant to the Superintendent, to come forward. And as he's making his way, I'm going to play just a short video introduction for his presentation.
in Our Schools Month. It recognizes the fact that all children deserve arts-rich schools, those with high-quality arts programs and comprehensive course offerings that benefit students in and outside of the art or dance studio, music room, or stage. The goal of this month-long event is to stress the importance of quality arts education programs in our schools. It also ensures that American students have access to a comprehensive sequential arts education taught by highly qualified arts educators. The benefits of arts education form the basis of world-class standards developed by the U.S. Department of Education and the National Endowment for the Arts and are celebrated in our district. Madam Chair, I'm going to go off script just a little and go to the end of my conversation and then come back to the front, if that's okay?
Yes, that'd be fine, thank you.
You have heard me say many times that we are blessed to work in a district that supports the arts. That is not just a saying or a tagline, but it is important to note because in the ever-evolving landscape of education, arts programs often find themselves on the periphery of budgetary decisions. However, let me share five fundamental outcomes and rationales that document my assertion. If you roam through the building, there's an art museum for us all to enjoy on all three floors, put in by all of our students, grades K through 12. The elementary chorus recorded their annual music in our schools concert just last week. Art teachers from Fort Pierce Westwood, Fort Pierce Central, Centennial High School created the empty bowls that they always sell to support the hungry and have raised over $15,000 just this week. On Thursday night at Treasure Coast, there will be an arts crawl where you get to witness the best in visual and performing arts. And of course, I'm inviting you and everyone here on March 27 to the Fenn Center for the Superintendent's Concerts celebrating Arts in Our Schools. Just last week, high school bands and choirs attended their music performance assessments. MPAs are equivalent to what we used to know as FSAs, but now FAST. Students earned a 1 through 5 in FAST, with a 5 being the highest. Well, in MPA, the 1 is equal to the 5. With that said, six high schools entered 10 bands, seven bands earned a 1, the highest score possible, and six bands earned the 2, the second highest. Five high school choruses entered eight choirs, two earned a superior, and six earned the 2, the excellent. One orchestra program entered two orchestras just today and made a 2, the second highest again. That supports my assertion that you and our community support the arts. But I have to brag just a little bit. Many of you know that I went to school with Mr. Raming, and I often tease that I taught him everything he knows. I'm going to admit tonight that I didn't, but Mr. Raming has been at Lincoln Park Academy for 19 years, and for 19 years, the choirs have scored superior, as they did last year with two groups, Mr. Raming and the group that performed tonight. With that said, I better get to the front of my presentation. At this time, I want to invite Ms. Laura Hopkins, Orchestra Director at Lincoln Park Academy, and Mr. Robert Fanelis, who's one of our awesome graduates and the choir director over at Treasure Coast, to present our Proclamation for Arts Education Month.
Good evening. Whereas March has been designated by the National Dance Education Organization Dance in Our Schools Month, by the National Association for Music Education as Music in Our Schools Month, by the National Theater Association as Theater in Our Schools Month, and by the Council for Art Education as Youth Art Month. And whereas, National Arts in Our Schools Month recognizes the fact that all children deserve arts-rich schools and is supported by the National Association for Music, Art, Dance, and Theater in cooperation with the U.S. Department of Education. And whereas, research increasingly shows that arts education heightens engagement for all students in learning in the arts, uniquely equips students with the skills and creativity, divergent thinking, problem-solving, and teamwork that they need to be college and career-ready. These benefits of art education form the basis of world-class standards developed by the U.S. Department of Education and the National Endowment for the Arts. And whereas, during the throes of the American Revolution, General George Washington wrote a letter to the American Academy of Arts and Science, saying, "The arts and sciences are essential to the prosperity of the state and to the ornament of human life."
Whereas arts-rich schools, those with high-quality arts programs and comprehensive course offerings, include four separate and distinct disciplines: dance, music, theater, and visual arts, each with its own body of knowledge and skills. And whereas arts learning is increasingly understood as essential skills needed to succeed in a 21st-century workforce, during this National Arts Month, we celebrate the power of the arts, to bring people together and to show us that we have more in common than we are different. Whereas St. Lucie County Public Schools recognizes the arts as a crucial element of a balanced education for all students, as outlined in the Every Student Succeeds Act and the state law, and that certified K-12 educators bring highly specialized technical skills and innovative teaching methods to daily instruction. And whereas March is filled with great reasons to focus on arts education in our schools and to urge all citizens to advocate, celebrate, and participate to show their support for the arts.
Board members, with all those young eyes looking at us, I will entertain a motion in a second. So move Mr. Ingersoll, second Mrs. Hawley. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Thank you so much.
And Madam Chair, I would ask our board members to go in front of the dais for pictures,
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Prince, we often hear athletes that make it to state, where we have some music students that also have made it to state and will forever be recognized as all-state musicians, so we want to celebrate them at this time. The first student is from Alapata Flats, K-8. Her name is Annabella Sanchez. She's not here tonight because the band is onstage performing for their MPAs at this time at Treasure Coast High School. But at this time, we'll welcome from Creative Arts Academy of St. Lucie, with her teacher, Mr. Fanelis, Molly Grove, 8th grade student who made the 7th and 8th grade honors band, From Lincoln Park Academy, 8th grader, Sophia Leaf Lang, who made the all-state middle school honors orchestra, and her teacher, Ms. Hopkins. Board members, remember this name, please. Isabella Arana Cisneros. She's in the 8th grade from Lincoln Park Academy, all-state middle school concert choir, and her teacher, Mr. Raming. From St. Lucie West Centennial High School, performing in the SSAA all-state choir, Ariana Finley and her teacher, Mr. Totten. Performing in the high school all-state reading course from Lincoln Park Academy, Ansley Skinner and her teacher, George Raming. From Fort Pierce Westwood Academy, performing in the high school's honors band, Daniel Figueroa and Mr. August. and Mr. August. Board members, I ask you to remember that name. She was with us last year. As a matter of fact, this is the fifth year that she is with us, and she has been an all-state student, performing in the All-State Symphonic Orchestra, second violin. Remember the name, Jessel Arana Cisneros, and her teacher, Ms. Hopkins. And as we're concluding at this time, I know we have some other music teachers, art teachers, dance teachers, drama teachers that may be in the audience, even some of us that are recovering like Jane and I, if you would please stand and be recognized at this time. Board members and our community, thank you, thank you so very much for your continual
Next, I'd like to invite Emma Edgar, Direct Development Director and School Engagement from the American Heart Association, who will share with us about the Kids' Heart
Good evening, everyone. It is a pleasure to get to be with you all tonight. Like Lydia said, my name is Emma Edgar, and I serve as the new School Engagement Director for the Kids' Heart Challenge, or formerly known as Jump Rope for Heart here in St. Lucie and surrounding counties. And I have the wonderful pleasure of getting to recognize the impact of schools here in St. Lucie tonight, as well as Palm Point K-8 for their incredible impact as a top school this year. For those unfamiliar with Kids' Heart Challenge, it is one of the nation's largest community service learning programs where families have the opportunity to learn hands-only CPR and the warning signs of a stroke with their children at home, as well as to make that impact within their own families and sharing it with their community. What is really special is that just last year, with 11 schools in St. Lucie County participating in Kids' Heart Challenge, we had over 10,000 families who gained access to heart-healthy information for their families, as well as over 71 families who learned hands-only CPR and the warning signs of a stroke. Like I said, it's my first year with the American Heart Association, and I hear stories every single day in this role of the impact that this program has and the impact that coaches like Coach Centoro and Coach Piscopo over at Palm Point have. We have second graders and third graders who are saving lives in their community by identifying the signs of a stroke in their grown-ups and by saving lives and members of their communities through hands-only CPR. So we'd like to take a special moment and invite Coach Centoro up here with me today. He partners with Coach Piscopo at Palm Point K-8 to bring Kids' Heart Challenge to their students, and it has become evident to me just in the last few months of getting to work with them how important Kids' Heart Challenge is to them, as well as to their community. Last year, so in 2023 to 2024 academic year, this year's not over, so we'll wait until next year to get to recognize, but they were the top school in St. Lucie County with over $5,200 raised to support kids and families in this community and others with special hearts or with sick hearts, which is really such an incredible impact. They were also the number-one school in St. Lucie County for students completing Finn's Mission, which is the component of Kids' Heart Challenge where students learn hands-only CPR. They had 16 students and their families, which doubles and even triples the impact, who learned hands-only CPR and learned a lifesaving skill. Additionally, as of last year, they have a lifetime over $85,000 raised for the American Heart Association and for kids with special hearts, and that does not even include what they have already done this year. So I would love for you all to join me in giving them an incredible round of applause for their impact there. And I am really excited to get to present the Top School Heart of Gold Award to Coach Centoro and to Palm Point and Coach Piscopo, who's not with us tonight. And it is really an honor to get to that, so thank you so much, Coach.
Next, we have a very special recognition for a very special person, and that is to recognize our very own Martha Vickers, who has 50 years of combined service with the school district and the transportation department. So if Ms. Vickers would come forward, and we will share some video and some photos. And you can go right up front, and then I'll let you say something. So the superintendent and our Director of Transportation, Jacunte Prince, surprised Ms. Vickers at her bus stop on Friday, and so I'm going to share just a quick video about what happened.
Guess what I'm here for?
What?
You've been dri, you've been working for us for 50 years. So that's for you.
Thank you.
And I've got some flowers for you, and I'm going to ride on your bus until we get to Dan McCarty.
All right.
And then if I can, I want you to get off the bus. I want to get a picture with you.
All right.
Is that all right?
All right.
Good morning.
All right.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congrats, baby. They won't let me drive the bus, so.
He has to drive.
But they said no. You've been with the district for about 50 years in different roles. I was, I was at her second, third-to-last bus stop this morning, and she didn't know what the heck I was doing there.
That's why. I don't know.
But I, I can tell you, we appreciate our bus drivers and the fact that you're still doing this now, and you're, you're just, the kids, you enjoy them. You've been with, with Brenda, who's been on your bus for, I think, 11 years, but we appreciate you, we value you, and I just said, if you want to go 50 more, let's do it.
No, my bad.
And I want to recognize, you've got some folks here, our, we've got board members, our board chair, Dr. Donna Mills, we've got a board member, Debbie Hawley, I've got a board member here, Ms. Jennifer Richardson, we wanted to make sure that we recognize you.
All right.
Along with our union president, David Frey.
All right.
I can't even hear with all the stuff you got.
This was at the bus ramp at Dan McCarty. We have Principal Stubbs, and then I failed to mention early, earlier, Mr. Terrence O'Leary, Chief Operations Officer, was there along with us for the fun. And here is Ms. Vickers with some of her family members, and it was just a great celebration. Ms. Vickers, did you want to say a few words? Okay, come on, come on forward.
I wanted to say thank you all. I thought I never could be surprised, but you all did it. For the help of my aide, Ms. Cole, and my twin sister, Ms. Hammond, Mary. So I want to say thank Dr. Prince, Mr. Prince, who is my director, and Mr. O'Leary, who makes, he is my director boss. So if my director boss don't do right, I can call him. But so far, we on the same page. So I really thank you all from the bottom of my heart. And you know, I always say, I always live, try to live by the good book. They say, wherever you sow, you gonna reap, good or bad. And I think after 50 years, I, I did some good and still walking. So I just thank God to be here, and I thank you all. I didn't know you all thought about me. You know, really, I didn't even think about 50 years. I just come to work, work with the children, because they needs drivers, and I said, well, what if I stay home? What I'm gonna do? Just look at the wall or await that Jesus come? He coming. I don't have to wait. So I decided to keep working, and I'm not retired. When I do go home, I will let you all know that I won't be back.
Congratulations once again. Let's give another round of applause for her 50 years of service. Ms. Ms. Vickers, would you like your family to come forward for a photo? All right, congratulations once again. Next, we would like to provide a recognition of Dan McCarty Middle School and their Science Bowl team for competing regionally against schools from multiple districts and placing first in the STEM category and advancing as high as the seventh round in the Science Bowl competition, their first ever. And we would like to recognize the coaches, Jackie Mahullen, Mark Hildebrandt, and Principal Stubbs, along with the students. So if you could come forward and get your photo, congratulations on your first-place Congratulations, Dan McCarty Middle School. Next, I'd like to ask Dr. Prince to come forward, who will present the next award.
So I get the honor of presenting this, this recognition to our board. It went through training, and they're recognized as a master board by the Florida School Boards Association, and I want to commend our board members for their commitment to our community, the teamwork that you display, and also, I'm very blessed to be Saint, Superintendent of St. Lucie County Public Schools because we do have a wonderful board. So I'd like to give this to the board members as a, well, it's not my token, but it's from the Florida School Boards Association certifying you as a master board.
All right, congratulations. And next, we will move on to our STAR awards, and we have multiple people that are going to be receiving a STAR award, but it is basically all from their participation in support of the MLK Youth Symposium. These, these individuals were nominated by members of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, and each year, Alpha Kappa, members of the Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority utilize the historic grounds and building of LPA to host the annual MLK Youth Symposium. This event brings the youth in both St. Lucie and Inney River County together for information, engagement, food, and fun. This work could not be done without the help of key individuals and school departments, and we would like to recognize the following. First, the plant manager at Lincoln Park Academy, Mr. Washington, and custodial crew members Lisa Castro and Dorothy Rent, if you could come forward. Mr. Washington and his team made sure the entire setup was prepared to greet the participants, and he made sure that the layout of each room was ready to go for facilitators going out of his way to make sure he got materials in place. Lisa and Dorothy were constantly asking members of the logistics team how they could help and magically had items appear just when they were needed. The entire team was professional and eager to assist for the entire day. Next, some individuals from the Student Services Department, Lewis Hinton, Cheryl Mobley, and Mary Say Joseph. These individuals, please come forward. They lead the student, they lead the student perks crew, and it's always a hit with the community. These educators signed up the coffee crew to come out and serve up smiles and exceptional customer service. Mr. Hinton is also Johnny-on-the-spot for technology troubleshooting. This team of educators was fantastic. Next, from our child nutrition food department, Darren Frymore and John Bernard. They catered pizza and all the fixings for a multitude of hungry teenagers. Darren was so supportive in making sure everyone came, and hungry left the cafeteria full. John made it easy in feeding the entire group that descended on the cafeteria. So congratulations to these individuals. The best part of this annual event is that the community comes together to provide meaningful information for our children and our future. Thank you to everyone for participating in this event, and I just want to say a special thank you to the leadership at Lincoln Park Academy. I know they're probably still here in the back, under Dr. Harrington's leadership, being supportive and utilizing her building as well. Thank you, congratulations, and. Okay, I was just informed, we do have some members of the sorority in, in the audience. If you would please stand and be recognized as well. These are the individuals that lead the MLK Youth Symposium. Thank you so much for being here this evening. And Madam Chair, that concludes our Special Orders of Business for this evening. And Madam Chair, that concludes our Special Orders of Business for this evening.
What a wonderful time of special thanks and recognition. Always does my heart well to see so many people honored and recognized for their commitment to St. Lucie County Public Schools. And a special thank you to Ms. Martha Vickers for your 50 years of service. At this time, we will have our ESO report by David Freeman, if he's here this evening. Are you here, David? There he goes. Welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Mills, board members, Superintendent Prince, and the community. For a change, I'm actually speechless. I've got some things to say, so let me say the good stuff, then I'll tell you what I'm concerned about. I want to talk about all of the great things we've seen tonight in the arts. In fact, I'm actually glad that I didn't have to follow the chorus, because you never want to follow an act like that, so I'm glad there were some things in between us. And as far as the arts go, I'm going to tell you about my son, Christopher. I was an athlete in school. My son wasn't. In fact, I've got videos where he stood in the outfield and chased butterflies during baseball at one point. Right, it's just not his thing, and I'm okay with that. But I wanted to find something that he was as passionate about as I was about sports. And I believe it was fifth grade, I insisted, you're going to give band a try. I mean, I was in band for a while, but you had to make a choice when I was growing up, so I picked sport. So he didn't want to do it. He did what fifth graders do. He fought and fought and fought, but he went to band because that's what I insisted he do. And about the second week, he came home, and I said, how's band going, Christopher? How's band going, kiddo? He goes, you know, I like it. It's full of kids just like me. And it completely changed the trajectory of his academic career. The arts are critically, critically important. I mentioned that, and I'm sure you guys love when I go off script, but I've got, I just got news, and you guys may already know this, but I got it 10 minutes ago, that half of the staff at the Department of Education was just fired and the offices are shuttered. And so I just, I know you know, but I want to be sure the community knows and our members know how important that is. The Department of Education provides support for students, for educators, for ESE. Just a myriad of programs that are important to our students. I actually don't have a list in front of me, but you're aware. And hopefully, our community and teachers are aware of how important the Department of Education is. And I'm not going to get into the politics of why it was closed, although I could talk for hours about that, but the harm that it could potentially do our students, to programs like we saw this evening, to our educators. And it's concerning because even programs that aren't directly supported are going to be impacted, as we have to make choices about how we're going to pay for the other things that we need and our students need. And it's not just, like I said, it's not just about the union, or it's not about the union working with the district, it's about the entire community is going to have to address this in some way. How do we keep band? How do we keep chorus? How do we keep the academics we need? How do we protect our ESE and special needs students to make sure that they're getting the education they need? That's what the Department of Education does for us. How do we protect our students and our teachers, but mostly our students from discrimination? That's part of what the Department of Ed, Education protects and monitors. And so I'm going to be honest, I'm very, very concerned about that, and I'm sure we will work together, as we always have, to meet those challenges. But I just, I want to be sure that our community understands what that could possibly do to us and to their students. And why it's going to be so important, one of the things I want to talk about tonight, but why it's going to be so important to be sure that we locally do everything we can to respect our teachers, our support staff, all of those people that do the work that we do, because we're going to be feeling pressure from this, just like the board is going to be feeling pressure. Teachers need to be free to teach in their classroom. They need to be supportive, but support doesn't mean that people come in and take over their class. Our support staff are going to have to feel respected, and we do that, but it's going to be more important now than ever to realize how important those people are to the mission that we do here in St. Lucie County. And we faced challenges together before, and we'll face this one, but this is a big one, and this is one that's going to impact not just us, but our community. And so, you know, at the risk of rambling, I'll try and get to, the point is, we need to work together. This is going to actually have ripples that I don't think we're even aware of yet, should this actually continue and the Department of Education is closed. You know, because, well, a lot of reasons. I'm not sure that money's going to come back to our community. So we'll lose that. We're not going to have the support we do at the federal level. So again, I'm really very, very concerned about what I'm seeing in many ways, but on topic of what's happening at national level to education right now and to the impact it could have. So I can't say I'm looking forward to it, but not because of you, but we need to work together, and I'm sure we will do that to meet this challenge. But again, I just want to be sure that the community understands it the way we do and what this could do to us and to our students. And that's all I have to say for tonight.
Thank you so much.
So thank you very much. I appreciate the time.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. CWA reporters, is there someone here for that? Oh, Ms. Vickers.
Good afternoon again. Dr. Prince and Madam Chair Miller and the board members. And Martha Vickers, President, Vice President, First Vice President, CWA. I come tonight to recruit bus drivers because we need bus drivers. And I said, well, maybe I start with in-house. You know, like, Dr. Prince, you might want to get your CDL. And see, you got one board member qualify, Mr. Ingersoll. He qualify. And then I thought about Dr. Mill. She can re-estate her license because she is a bus driver. And the real silver follows him. So we need bus driver. We have air manager, they have CDL license, because we have a lot of pressure on the driver. And we do all we could. Sometime the children get school late, but we doing the best we can until we get some more drivers. And don't leave the principal out. They can get CDL too. And then help us out, and the children won't be late for to school. And then in our contract, it stated that the coaches, they can get CDL and drive their team. And that'll be the pressure, because the drivers, what we have taking them out of town, that mean we still short. So I just want you all to, maybe I need to come and visit up there and we have a talk. Because it's got to be better. If I did 50 years, I'm not doing 50 more. Maybe if you get enough driver, I can go home and wait Jesus come. But I don't want to do that. But lay all jokes aside, we need drivers. I don't know, is it because of the price, the salary, or whatever? And maybe I'm the last one that dedicate. I don't know. But I tried to give them the state when they come. I look, they gone. And I tried my best. So I want to speak about our department, because I know transportation department. We know if the children don't get to school, nobody work. I don't know about cafeteria worker. I guess if they have problem, they'll come to me, I address that, and the custodial board, we need to see something about. And please, if we late and doing the best we can, that's a blessing. And they should be proud that their children get to school. If it not on time. So that's all I have to say, and thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Vickers. Ms. Vickers, I lasted for one year driving school bus, one year. That's how hard your guys' jobs are, and we appreciate what you do. You know, when you have your back turned and kids, you can't see them, that's when they really want to hack up. But thank you so much for the work that you all do, getting our kids to and from school. At this time, we're going to move on to our St. Lucie Public Schools Youth Advisory Council. All right, well, that's not President Alexandra Morgan, but we're going to find out who that is. All right.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent Dr. Prince, and the rest of the board members. I am Joshua Leacow, the Vice Chairman of the St. Lucie Public Schools Youth Advisory Council. And I am presenting this month's report on behalf of Alexia Morgan, who is currently taking a chemistry exam, IRSC. I wouldn't be in a suit myself, but I just came from a tennis match, so we're going to have to work what we have. On Monday, February 24th, the St. Lucie Public Schools Youth Advisory Council held its regular meeting at Fort Pierce Westwood Academy. We had a productive discussion covering key student concerns and student updates across the district. One of the primary concerns discussed was student accessibility to guidance counselors. Dr. Helen, the Deputy Superintendent, and Mrs. Nikki Poole, Executive Director of Guidance, were both in attendance at the meeting to listen to student voice regarding guidance department concerns district-wide. Many students expressed frustration with the lack of responsiveness from counselors, difficulty booking meetings, and even instances where scheduled appointments were not honored. Some schools have no criticism for requesting meetings, while others have platforms that are ineffective or go unanswered. Additionally, misinformation regarding college credit courses has caused confusion, heightened the need for stronger communication between high school counselors and IRSC counselors. Students also emphasized the importance of mental health support, suggesting the counselors set designated office hours to ensure accessibility for those in need. Dr. Helen Wilde and Nikki Poole committed to looking into these issues, including addressing challenges with the team's platform to improve communication between students and counselors. As always, we are grateful for the support that is always given to the Youth Advisory Council by the district personnel. For school updates, schools reported recent and upcoming events, including fundraisers, pep rallies, senior recognition activities, and orientation sessions for new students. Several schools are actively planning major events such as proms, spirit weeks, and senior celebrations. Community service efforts, academic competitions, and student-led initiatives were also highlighted. Additionally, a safety concern was raised about students being at risk near a particular school due to traffic issues, prompting a discussion on the need for additional crossing guard support before and after school hours. This meeting concluded at 5:06 PM after a comprehensive discussion on student concerns and school initiatives. Our next meeting is scheduled for March 31st at Samuel Gaines Academy and will be hosted by Mosaic Digital Academy. I hope you all have a wonderful spring break. Thank you.
Thank you so much, young man. Thank you for your report. Okay, at this time, we're going to go right directly to our consent agenda. We want to do the adoption of the consent agenda. Board members, I will entertain a motion in a second.
So moved.
So moved by Ms. Arisaw, and second by Mr. Ingersoll to adopt the consent agenda as present. Superintendent's recommendation for approval, please, of the consent agenda.
I recommend the board approve the consent agenda submitted.
Superintendent has recommended the board remove the consent agenda as submitted. I will entertain a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Ms. Harley, moved by Ms. Harley, second by Mr. Ingersoll. At this time, is there any items from the consent agenda to be removed for discussion or separate vote? Seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five, zero. We are at our informational report time here for charter schools, our monthly financials. Just as a reminder, charter schools' financial statements are presented to the board for informational purpose only. No approval of a charter school's financial statement is required. This presentation, acceptance of charter school financial statements, is to demonstrate compliance with Section 1002.33. Board members, you have all of the financial reports from every charter school in the district. Please read them at your leisure. Superintendent, can we have now staff reports and your report, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, just a couple of reminders. Not that any of our principals out there are counting the days down, but next week is spring break, and not that our students would be counting those days down. But I would encourage, just a reminder, Friday is a half-day for students, but we still encourage, and we want to make sure, instruction is taking place on Friday, so we want our students attending school. And then the following Monday is a teacher workday, and then we'll be returning on, students at least, on Tuesday, the 25th. I want to invite our board to the groundbreaking, March 25th, for the New Western Grove K8. That is not the name of the school, it's just the location of the school. That will be at 9:00 AM, and then we have a few tours, and once again, the board can participate in what they wish. We're going to be taking a tour of Legacy High School, and we'll also be taking a tour of Fort Pierce Westwood High School at 12:15, and that will conclude our workshop for that day. The Education Foundation Hall of Champions is going to be at the St. Lucie Trail Gold Club, March 26 at 12:00. We've got some familiar faces that are nominees, the lifetime achievement is Judy Miller, former board member, outstanding community leaders Howard Dunn, Deb Mock, who's also our Citizens Advisory Committee Chair, and then distinguished alumni, Jose Alejandro Ruiz, and none other than Harry Belafonte Williams. And shout out to Harry, because we were together for breakfast this morning, and I congratulated him at that time. We have a CTE showcase, April 3rd at 8:00 AM at the school district offices. And lastly, I wanted to say, I'm wearing green because Monday is St. Patrick's Day, but I want to wish our students and all of our employees a very healthy spring break. If you're off, please be careful in your travels and come back safely to us. Lastly, my message to Martha Vickers. Martha, I want to congratulate you and thank you. I waited at that bus stop for about 20 minutes, and you were on time. Right when they said you were going to be there, you pulled up. So well done, and I also wanted to say thank you for your service. And Martha, you're really representative of all of our bus drivers and the support people that get our schools, that get our students safely to school, or feed our kids, or get them to and from a classroom, the teachers, the support staff. It does take a village, and everybody is overworked and underpaid, but this passion that we have called public education, I do believe it is the genius of our democracy. And I want to thank all of our employees. And Martha, you are a great representative of our employees that are committed for 50 years driving that bus. And Martha, by the way, they told me I could not drive the bus, even as superintendent, because I don't have my CDL license. And that concludes my remarks.
Thank you, Superintendent. Let's get ready to say Superintendent Jen, Superintendent Dr. Prince. Thank you, Superintendent Dr. Prince. I could have kept that to myself, right? Okay, Attorney Cole, do you have any reports?
No, ma'am, no report.
We do have an action item that's up, board members, for vote. At this time, I open. At this time, I open up this item for any public comments. This item is in regards to a board member, Teresa Arison. She will be traveling to attend the FSBA New Board, School Board Member Academy Part Two, on March 18th through March 19th in Tallahassee. Ms. Arison is the official school, is in official school business. And that is said, travel complies with the rules of the State Board of Education. So at this time, we do open this up for public comment. If there's anyone here who would like to talk about this particular item, action item. All right, seeing none? I will call for a motion in a second.
Motion.
So moved by Mr. Ingersoll, second by Ms. Harley to confirm, we confirm the travel to attend the FSBA New School Board Member Meeting. We now come to our board members' reports and comments.
Madam Chair, I don't think I voted. Did we vote?
Do we need to vote or just confirm this? Okay, so we'll move forward with the vote. Any discussion from the board? Okay, so let me entertain, oh, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. All right, school board members, we have our reports at this time. We will start with you, Mr. Ingersoll.
I'm good, no report today, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Richardson?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So I've been very busy this week and last week. And I wanted to share with you some of the things that I, places I went and, and what I saw. So if you'll just bear with me, because it is important for community. So we're, I'm going to start with our four-legged heroes. They are therapy dogs. They, therapy dogs have become valuable members of St. Lucie County Fire District's team, supporting the mental health of first responders, or therapy dogs. Kona, Birdy, and Pierce serve as furry companions in a groundbreaking behavioral health initiative. The first program of its kind for fire rescue services on the Treasure Coast. In addition, the power of these four-legged supporters continue to grow. IRSC just welcomed K-9 Officer Graham to their ranks. Graham is an enthusiastic one-year-old beagle with specialized training from the prestigious Paws and Stripes College. This certified therapy dog, and this is in quote, is already transforming the IRSC's campus atmosphere with his soothing presence, offering comfort and stress reduction through every tail wag and gentle interaction. Graham is making a huge impact at IRSC. Last Friday, some of Lakewood Park's elementary school and third graders experienced the joy of a therapy dog visit. Four remarkable dogs, Bailey, Charlie, Loki, and Olive. They traveled from Palm Beach and Jupiter respectively with their dedicated handlers, Julia, Pat, Alan, and Christine. I extend my heartfelt appreciation to these volunteers for sharing their time, and they are volunteers, for sharing their time and their extraordinary companions. Thank you to Alan Levine from the prestigious Certified Therapy Dog, Inc. for making this visit possible. Special recognition goes to Principal Melrose. I don't, is she here? Yes, there's Principal Melrose. Yeah. Principal Melrose and Assistant Principal Monroe for embracing this opportunity. Principal Melrose and Assistant Principal Monroe, I want to especially commend you for your exceptional vision in bringing this program to Lakewood Park Elementary. Principal Monroe's immediate enthusiasm for this initiative demonstrates her innovative approach to education and deep commitment to student well-being. Managing a school with unique challenges requires extraordinary, extraordinary leadership. And Principal Monroe's, Melrose continues to rise to the occasion with creative solutions that benefits her students. Watching her interact with the children reveal the genuine love she has for them and the sentiment they clearly return in full measure. Thank you, Principal Melrose, for your dedication to creating enriching experience that support both academic growth and mental health. The visit embodied pure joy and connection. These remarkable animals created an atmosphere of unconditional acceptance, giving and receiving love in those precious moments together. Again, Principal Melrose, I just can't thank you enough. So I'm just going to be speaking to you. Your support went beyond mere permission. You embrace the full potential of this experience for your students. A highlight of the visit allows students to read aloud to their K-9 audience, a practice known as non-judgmental reading that creates a pressure-free environment where children can develop reading confidences and enthusiasm. I would like to thank the Superintendent and the Deputy Superintendent for recognizing the value of therapy dogs in and for the district. My commitment to reading proficiency stands alongside my dedication to mental health wellness. In today's complex world, tending to our mental health isn't optional. It's essential. Today, I stepped into a different role at Centennial High School, joining the food service team as they prepared and served meals to our students. This hands-on experience opened my eyes to the daily realities of our frontline staff, or the daily realities our frontline staff's faces, showing me not only the joy that comes from serving our children, but also the remarkable teamwork that allows them to overcome challenges with grace and determination. What struck me most was the creativity of the staff who continuously innovate to enhance student satisfaction and create a positive atmosphere. Connecting with this extraordinary team and directly experiencing their daily challenges gave me valuable insights I would not have gained otherwise. Though I worked in elementary school cafeteria decades ago, this experience not only stirred memories, but highlighted the significant evolution of food service in our school. I offer my deepest respect to these staff members, truly understanding their, that their work requires more than knowledge. It demands experience. Our food service personnel quietly performs essential work that rarely receives the recognition it deserves. The nutrition they provide is fundamental to our education, or the educational mission, supplying the brain fuel our students need to learn effectively. These staff members often, among the first faces of children, see and frequents, frequently the lowest compensated in our organization, consistently exceed expectation. They infuse care and love in their cooking and strive to create appealing meals, a service particularly vital in our Title I schools, where many depend on free and reduced lunch programs. I strongly believe that all district-level administrators and executives would gain transformative insights by spending time in our schools, whether assisting with maintenance, navigating challenging bus routes, working in food service, or leading a classroom. Such experiences inevitably shift perspectives. I saw things very differently today when I was lifting, or not lifting, when I was serving and when I was washing my hands and all the things that, that was necessary. It was a different perspective. Seeing through the eyes of those working directly with our students could inspire even more meaningful improvements across our district. Scripture reminds us that faith without work is dead. And the Apostle Paul challenges us to show me your faith without works. And I, Paul, will show you my faith by my works. The time for action is now. We can no longer simply claim understanding. We must work alongside our frontline educators who deeply immerse, who are deeply immersed in the daily realities of education. We have a responsibility to ensure every staff member receives the dignity and respect they deserve. True leadership requires active participation, seeing firsthand what occurs in our schools each day. Only through this engagement can we make decisions that truly honors the exceptional dedication of those who directly serve our students. I know this is long-winded, but some things just needs to be said. So I thank you for your time, just sitting here and listening to, because I think that this is important. Last but not least, I want to talk to Ms. Martha. Ms. Martha, today we celebrate an, you're an extraordinary milestone and even more, an extraordinary person. For half a century, 50 years, Ms. Martha Vickers has safely transported our community's most precious cargo, our children. And I want to put things in perspective for us today. Fifty years ago, 1975, was the year the Vietnam War ended. The Vietnam War ended in 1995. Microsoft was discovered in 1995. And the top, the number-one song was "Love Will Keep Us Together." 1975, I'm sorry, 1975. And that was by Captain Antoneel. Since then, Ms. Martha has been the first smile many of our students see every morning and the reassuring presence that delivers them safely home each afternoon. I have to stand for this, Ms. Martha, because I do want to honor you. What makes Martha truly special isn't just the length of her service, but the quality of her character. Those who know Ms. Martha describes her as "a woman of quiet strength, whose presence is deeply felt even when few words are spoken." Someone whose loyalty to this community, her job, and her church has never wavered. A dependable cornerstone in the lives of countless families across generations. A caring soul who consistently goes above and beyond what's required. A humble servant who finds joy in her work every single day. Ms. Martha's commitment to her community extends far beyond her driver's seat. She is respected throughout our community for her impeccable character and credibility. A truly wholesome presence who has earned the trust of parents, colleagues, and students alike. When faced with challenges, Ms. Martha draws strength from her faith, often turning to biblical wisdom for encouragement. She's encouraged me quite a few times. This spiritual foundation has surely contributed to her remarkable resilience through five decades of service. Ms. Martha, as you sit here today, please note you have touched more lives than you can possibly imagine. The children you have safely carried, many now with children, even grandchildren of their own. The parents whose minds you have put at ease and the colleagues you have the privilege of working alongside you. Fifty years. Fifty years. We have to take our time and spend the time to honor this woman. Fifty years is a long time. Fifty years of faithful service deserve our deepest gratitude and highest honors. Ms. Martha Vickers, on behalf of our entirety, entire community, the community that I serve, the residents, we thank you for your unwavering dedication, your caring heart, and for showing us all what it means to find true fulfillment in serving others. Your legacy isn't just measured in miles driven or years served, but in the countless lives you have positively influenced along the way. And like we said, Ms. Martha isn't going anywhere. Fifty more years, Ms. Martha, we love you and thank you. That's my report.
Thank you, Ms. Richardson. Ms. Harley? Ms. Arison?
I just want to report that tomorrow will be our last and final training, Young Floridian Training in the high schools and 17-year tradition of Young Floridian Training. And hopefully, next month, we'll be able to have an update on some important legislation that we're following in Tallahassee that will infect, deeply affect local schools here and certification processes. And that's all.
Thank you, Ms. Arison. I want to especially thank our audience. I see several faces in the audience that I do know out in the community. And you are here this evening. And we appreciate your attendance. And we want to acknowledge each and every one of you for caring enough about our school district to be here and advocate for our children. Also, I am traveling to all the different schools in the community, in the, in the county. My goal is to get to every single school. For the principals, I think you've already been told that I'm on my way soon or later. I come to visit, I come to see your marvelous and magnificent work that you do in the school district. And, and just to let you know that we support you as a school board. I want one particular principal that stood out as I went to her school. And all of the schools did a wonderful job hosting me. Thank you for hosting me at your school principals. But as I was traveling, I went to Ms. Green, Principal's Green School. And Principal Green has taken her school from a D school to an A school in only two years. So I want to acknowledge Principal Green. She also is our Principal of the Year here in St. Lucie County School District. At this time, we say have a good evening, get rested up for tomorrow. All of you have tremendous job responsibilities. Enjoy your evening. We adjourn.